I'm going to call the meeting to order. And, uh, once read, I certainly entertain a, uh, a motion to accept. For a second?
I'll say it.
Are there any additions, corrections, any comments from anybody? All vote in favor? Okay. To bring, I guess, Chip up to date a little bit, we spent forty-five, fifty minutes or so, um...
That's Chip in Florida.
No, I got...
My kid is Chip.
It's just a letter. Maybe two.
We should bring Chip up today, too.
He's probably watching. He's probably watching.
Yeah, Chip for now.
So we took a look at the, uh, the lot in question, uh, out on Fulton Road. And, um, you know, we, we had spent some time last week looking at, uh, the maps that were drawn and things like that. As I said to, um, Jennifer and, um, it's, it's Phil?
Yes.
Coming up the hill is up the hill from the lake. It's, uh, it's pretty steep kind of a deal. So anyway, um, let's, we throw it out to everybody and, um, see where we want to take this. Comments?
Is there a timeframe for the fifty percent?
As far as...
He has like this one time point to do less than fifty percent of that and trigger that?
It's the scope of the project, within the project.
Okay, so underneath the comment?
Correct.
So the, the variable that we still have to is whether or not the septic can be moved or, or if it can, then where it could be moved, right? Which kind of enhance where we, what we're looking about?
It's roughly twenty-five feet from the camp to the septic tank now.
It's actually ten feet from the septic?
Where the frost goes, yeah.
You can go back twenty-five feet. That's it. And still stay in flat?
Right. It's thirty, I think we have forty-four feet to the septic with a ten-foot offset from that, thirty-four. And the camp is thirty-two feet deep.
Well, when we look at the power lines, though, it doesn't really seem like moving the tank would gain them much, right? Because we still have, you know, the, the camp is still going to be limited by the utility pool.
The camp around the...
Yeah, but is it ten feet off of the line, or...
It depends on what the easement is for that area. Those older ones that go cut for the odds and not very...
It's just the walking easement, most of it.
Exactly, yeah.
They can be over the structure.
Right. Newer ones, they're looking for eight feet side side. Older ones, they have a radius around the wires, so they don't care about the ground. It can just be as long as the roof stays away from them.
What type of line, like, what type of power line is it? It's not intentional, it's just a little one.
Well, they got, they got one line that goes to the neighbors and keeps going along the side of the lake. And then they got the one lower line that come, you know, comes into their neighbor's camp and then they go...
And they don't pipe the line?
Transmission line?
No, I don't think so.
They're pretty good sized lines, though.
Yeah, I mean, they go to multiple camps.
They're going down to multiple, yes.
Okay, so you're talking about three line one?
I don't know what they are specifically, but, uh, it's not, they're not little.
But isn't it just that little one that we're kind of infringing?
But we thought that we could come up with a plan that would take care of that by coming up the center of the line, of the, of the large line. So we could change the direction from which that... Or we would, it would be the potential to do that.
Was that for the neighbor's camp?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes. Tall line, I don't see it no matter what, but that would become too much of an issue, I don't think. Would be eight feet away from it even. We should never be that close to that, I don't think.
No, it's on the opposite side of the septic.
Right. Of the, of the drain, right?
Correct.
So Ken, if we moved it back to full thirty-two feet? So it's roughly parallel to its existing relationship to that, uh, side lot line, Camp Dela Soul lot line? So it's not any more non-conforming in regards to that? That would necessitate relocating the tank?
Uh, I think if, uh, one option would be if it was relocated back approximately twenty-five feet, then you could go for the ten-foot offset and not touch any of the septic. If you go greater than that, you are, you're probably going to relocate the tank, which is not the toughest thing, and it's a fairly simple process, but...
And then do the floor thirty-two?
Would you relocate, you're going to go up here on relocation?
No, it's all for the driveway.
So it's either tw- where did you get that figure, twenty-two, Phil?
I was saying thirty-two because that would just essentially moving it back to floor one to the camp behind the hundred-foot line.
Well, I, I was, I wanted to see what, then Kenny was saying, uh, twenty-two feet would still give them an allowable offset to the tank and would not necessitate moving the tank? Is that what you said?
Yeah, twenty-five. And you'd be able to gain your ten-foot side setback too and get it to be almost a conforming structure.
Oh, because you'd draw it a little toward Wheeler's property?
Yeah.
Okay.
You'd still be within the hundred-foot zone by ten feet on the front of it, but...
Then would have, could you compute that real quickly, just so we know what would be, what would be their allowable, uh, square footage? If they appealed for a thirty percent at some time in the future? I know, um...
Well, most of the addition would be beyond the hundred foot, so the thirty percent wouldn't be factored. It would only be if they're trying to do it within the hundred foot to the lake, to the front of the camp. So, and, um...
But if they moved it back to twenty-two, wouldn't they gain some allowable, uh, increase in floor area? Because, as I see it, twenty-two feet of the camp would be...
Outside of the hundred foot zone, exactly.
It wouldn't be outside of the hundred, I don't think, because it's sixty-five to the corner.
Uh, that purple line on the backside of the camp's the hundred-foot line.
Yeah, but if we move only twenty-two feet, that's only going to get it back eighty-seven.
To the front?
To the front, yeah.
Yeah, I understand. If we did an addition from the back and forward, the remainder that's outer, the twenty-two would be applicable to thirty percent situation. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that remainder that's still in the hundred-foot zone, they could do thirty percent on that.
Yes.
Which wouldn't be, I mean, if it was ten by, how wide's the camp, twenty?
Twenty-two.
So, two-hundred-and-twenty square feet, a third of that, seventy square feet, that would get you your, some sort of landing at the top of your steps.
Yeah, let's talk about that for a minute. If we push this back and it doesn't get completely behind the hundred-foot mark, there still would be no way, no legal way to put steps in, on, on that door?
Correct.
In the front.
Yeah, I think I've got leeway for road setback for entries as a, your primary entry, but this would be secondary, it would be eager, so...
But if you brought the house back, you brought the camp back and turned it? Would she be within the boundary lines for the two sidewalk, for the sidewalk? And you were turning it, you'd all be on her feet within it, right? So it looks like it's longer than his law.
Yeah, it is.
So if you're turning it, you're going to move it anyway. Why don't you spin it around some bias? Now you're outside the hundred foot, and he can do it, if he wants to put an addition, it's all on the side of the woods.
Yeah, no, I like that, then, then the door would be facing to the side easily. Put a entrance there when you have the hundred foot.
Better just turn it around.
Just see how it works with the neighbor's property line and the, uh...
Jennifer, what did you say that was thirty-two feet long? The one part of the house and then by twenty-two feet, thirty-two by twenty-two?
Correct.
How wide is the lot?
And you'd be ten feet in front of the tank anyway?
Yeah, it was only seven. How big is that length?
Yeah, it's only six feet.
Sixty.
Six foot seven to the side here.
So if you turned it the other way, it'd certainly more be...
Right, get the tent to you there.
So you could turn it around, you'd have a lot more freedom and, uh, room for it.
And then would you need to move the septic?
No, you wouldn't if you turned it like this around. See, correct in hand.
And they'd be on the septic on both sides?
They would, they would if you moved it. If you turn it around, you're only two feet, like, you're only two feet. And you got, you got thirty, you got thirty-two feet, thirty-four feet to the camp. You're turning it off thirty-two. Isn't that...
Yeah, about two, three, four feet.
How far septic thing has to be from the building? Here, even though the camp would be pretty reasonable.
Yeah, mm-hmm. You can drop it down to five foot.
Yeah. My tank is only about, you know, hopefully your models, the tank is only about six feet. Isn't that like eighty-eight, eighty-nine?
Yeah.
The inch of, those story, it's huge.
I mean, it looks to me really like the width of that block is going to be sixty, maybe sixty-five feet or something like that?
Yeah.
Six, you know, maybe even a hair more than that, I don't know, but...
Sixty-five?
That's the same distance from the water to the, you know, they're close.
So if it's thirty-two feet wide, the line, turning it the other way, you should be playing a room on either side, side, side lines, that becomes conforming there.
I think if you kept it in the orientation it is now, as you roll it back, you'd probably be just as conforming.
So it's possible that we could just, could we leave that just as an option?
I think basically you guys would just come up with a number. They can't be any closer than next to the lake, and it would be up to them to turn it, roll it, keep it straight.
Well, it looks like if they turned it, they could be back behind the hundred foot. But if they didn't turn it, they'd be ten foot within it.
If it was a breakdown and brand new, uh, definitely would be looking at that.
Yeah.
And at that point, they wouldn't even be coming to you guys, because we'd have taken care of it before it came to you.
Right, because it would be on your foot. Yeah.
And the, and the thirty percent would only be the part that's beyond the hundred, right?
Within zero to a hundred.
So another, with the backside of that building, it could be more than thirty percent.
Correct.
Once you shift it back.
Yeah.
That's my logic for maybe thinking in terms of, uh, trying to push it back as far as we could push it back is, all I can keep thinking about is the, the drop-off. You know, and I understand that there's, you know, it's vegetated and all that kind of thing, but the drop-off, pretty much right in front of the house is, is pretty significant. If we can get that back, um, then we have that level land that we can play with to really control the amount of, um, water runoff that will eventually make the lake.
The water would probably still be, would be going more toward the neighbor than toward the lake, uh, at that point.
Yeah, if you turn it the other, once you push it out, the other way.
Well, as it is now, comes off this side and then the drop-off here, there is some, you can see some water moving down the shore from, uh, overhang. Just fill them right there.
Well, it seems like it's possible to get that behind the hundred. Maybe the sideways, or, uh, that direction, we've got them in the tank, leaving things on.
Try to grab the new tank.
Right. But that's not close to saying...
It'd be something you'd consider when you came up with your number, how, how they could justify it.
Well, if they gain in terms of, um, new construction, uh, would it be feasible to squeeze something between Wheeler's lot, even if they, if they didn't turn it? Where did you get that figure, Gavin, that you had of seven hundred square feet? If they, if they...
Something their camp is now, seven hundred square feet. I had this, I had the seventy square feet was if it was ten feet still in the hundred foot, it would be about twenty-two wide by ten feet, you know, two-hundred-and-twenty. Thirty percent of that is about seventy, something.
As far as if you wanted to make the building a billion, it would be wise, and if you're going to go too expensive, won't they, why not turn it? It's not going to cost any more money than that.
Well, to gain us that ten, then, it would still be a good shot there.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, the hundred feet all day round.
Yeah.
I'm speaking for the, for myself, I don't care, it's going to cost the same money.
Right, they can pick which way they feel is it. The woods are pretty on the one side. If you turned it, you know...
I guess, even if we, you know, if someone was thinking that a, an option might be to turn it, if it's only twenty-seven feet to the tank that we measured, and we turn it, and we put the corner just at the hundred-foot line, and a hundred-foot, twenty-two foot, uh, width, it should be eight feet away from, you know, the existing tank.
Well, that is enough room, it's just, you know, close quarters.
Do we have that, I don't know if we have the eight feet though, I don't think we do.
We got five feet, right? It would be enough, I think it would work.
Says your findings wouldn't be, wouldn't be putting pressure on the tank.
Hmm. Right, the foundation guy would make, make that comment.
Well, he's got a lot of planning, it's not correct.
Right, well, somebody's got to put new, some of them there.
Yeah, but you can still use some of it too.
Yeah, and how close can you get to the tank with that tank?
About four, three, four feet.
Yeah, so, it would work.
It would work.
All right, are we ready to make a decision here, or still?
Yeah, like Ken said, I mean, we just have to come up with the distance from the lake, and they can choose the orient, and they can put a thing, kitty or whatever they want to. But if, if we see a, a way to, to get it, you know, hundred feet back and without them moving their septic, I think we should do that. The orientation, their, their purview on that one. And then if they wanted to move their tank or move something else, they could do, I guess, that was...
As far as the ground underneath the, underneath the present building, they could relax it.
Correct.
Well, yeah, that would be a huge benefit for the site to have a nice little yard in the front, right at the top of the hill.
I'm thinking that this is not a comfortable seat, you know?
You're complaining, you're only because I spat, now you're complaining about the seat, so, stop complaining. Yeah, it's pretty standard.
What are you looking at in the zoning ordinance, Ken?
I'm just looking at structures, foundations. I mean, to me, it looks like there's twenty-five feet there easily. That gets you to ninety. I think if you were trying to go for the hundred, it would be more difficult now that the septic's in.
What would be more difficult?
If you were trying to get it behind the hundred foot.
Oh, yeah. But you're thinking of rotating it ninety degrees?
I, I don't even think I'd bother with that. You're adding the roof to that one side, it'd be simple and easy to roll it back, uh, and end up with twenty-five feet in front of the camp, a flat area, usable area versus behind it. Versus trying to get the hundred out of it.
So, so what advantages the homeowner have down the road if they did want to do an addition? If, if they were to compare being ninety percent two-hundred, I mean, a hundred feet back and a hundred percent being a hundred feet back? What's, what might a person not be able to do if there's ten percent that's still in the, you know, within the hundred feet?
Well, it becomes usable back area, it's really crowding the driveway area. They'd have to construct bigger driveway behind the garage, parking areas, things like that, so you're just creating more impervious. It leaves, um, nine feet to the buffer of the setback behind the place, uh, with the calculations I have. And of course, it differs from one side to the other on the back of the camp, because the, um, hundred foot is at that, is at the shoreline angle there.
Yeah. I still look at that front door, though.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that'd be a window, it's a window. Can't stay.
If you turn it around, they'd be looking all, all the way and go, right? If you rolled it back and turned it, the entire building would be able to live on feet. So that leaves a lot more leeway to what he can and can't do. If he lays in that ten feet of, of the shore zone?
Yeah.
He ties his hands. If you got to spend that much money rolling back, you know, just turn it, and you've got maybe the liberty of doing basically any kind of renovation within reason. The way around, you want to make it your own home, I don't know if you could. The way it is now, you, you want to be fucking, you know, fucking the, the wood with your feet.
But if we put a number on it like a hundred, I mean, like ninety feet back from the water, and then after looking at all of that, um, you know, they, they don't have to stay at the ninety. They could take it back to the hundred and turn it if they decided that was the better way to go for them as an advantage.
Well, I'm just saying, to begin with the, I'm talking by own the place, I would, I would want to do it that way. Because it gives, it does, you know, freeze me up for the future. That ten percent that's going to be in there, that ten feet is going to re, sort of restrict what I can do with. I mean, I'm just following, well, I was looking at it as if I was having to say, sure, I don't.
Sure.
Any other thoughts? I want to get clear on that, on, on the, the, uh... Positive? No. Of expansion. If this thing is ninety percent, um, in conformity to the hundred-foot setback, what is the maximum amount of expansion that, uh, Phil could do there?
Within the hundred-foot zone?
No, back of the hundred-foot zone.
The only thing that would restrict him would be the twenty percent of our coverage.
And the power lines and the septic and all these things. He could make a bigger building if he wanted that, because he's backing on a hundred. I don't think having, uh, two-hundred square feet of building in the, inside the hundred would, would restrict him more than being outside, fully outside. Whatever, I mean, he could still put an addition on the back, it's away, the same size.
Correct.
And you'd be limited going up, because you could ten, ten feet would be, they could go up.
Yeah, I don't, I doubt they're going to go up.
Nobody's saying they'll be up.
I mean, it's just a ceiling in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm thinking about a camp with you.
Right, well, the volume, I mean, that is...
I don't know why I'm picturing a camp like I am under a camp, you know? Just a she-waugh ceiling.
I'm getting professional on something.
Yep.
If they, if they were to move this back so that ten percent, as I said, of the existing camp was closer than the hundred feet?
Right, you're just...
Yeah. The way it reads is, uh, that portion of the structure shall not be expanded as measured in floor area volume by more than thirty percent during the lifetime. Okay, that's pertaining to the ten percent.
Mm-hmm.
But...
Nothing's stopping them to put whatever they want back there with that part, with this other ninety percent.
That's what I'm, yeah.
As long as they need, you know, these...
Yeah.
It's got to conform to the side loads.
Or like the garage, they could take the garage and do anything they wanted with it.
Mm-hmm.
The door would be upon it there, you would have another feet. Do you have that sense of...
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I'd like to leave them with two options to look at. How do you phrase that? Either move it back to the maximum extent with the ridge pole perpendicular to the whole line, so it's going to back towards...
Totally outside of the, uh, hundred foot setback. No.
And that would necessitate rotating it ninety degrees.
Sixty-eight feet or sixty-eight.
Yeah, there's a lot of flexibility to no expansion now. Max, you know, give it like that.
But if we still set it at ninety feet, they could still do that? If they were chose to have that added, um, advantage?
Oh, and, yeah. And there would be no restrictions except setbacks?
Correct.
I would suggest, pretty often, the two options in this case, but, uh...
Well, I think I'd just state the number and how close you want it to the water and the side setbacks, and, I mean, the applicants can choose to move it back a hundred feet and not get out of all the thirty percent stuff. I mean, they can do that at any time.
Who do you think, you know, can say where it is? Kenny?
What's that?
It's the option, it's, I'm giving various, I'll say where it is.
Realistically, that wouldn't be an option, because there's room to relocate it back. That would probably generate a letter from the DEP for you guys to reconsider.
Yes, just a simple question. They have us in shackles. We'd have to pick one of us, Alan. Probably the oldest guy.
I don't think either me or you. I think it's you.
I can lie about me and you.
So if we go back to 90, to the 90 point, we gain 25-ish feet on the level. And maybe a little bit more in the front before it significantly drops off. So we're in the 30-ish flat area before it starts dropping to the water and where we can add to the mitigation of the, of any runoff. I mean, I could be comfortable with that.
Yeah, we're really just talking about 10 feet, 90 or 100.
The, the, the thing that fixes that is the regulation pertaining proximity to the tank, right? And what we're going to use as a figure for minimum allowable distance from tank?
You can drop that down to five feet.
Well, we use that as an anchor point and just say that the, the priest can move the existing camp away from the water so as to not necessitate moving the tank and having no more approximate setback from the tank than five feet. They might, allowing them to drag it straight back or turn it. And they can make that decision whether there's any benefit to turning it and having it completely outside of the 100-foot setback or not.
I would just assume for the records, have a number from the high watermark to the front of the camp. Not to say the tank would be right behind the camp tomorrow, but, I mean, that, that could happen. So I'd.
So what would you say the figure to use there? The 22? There's a number, we were talking around 22.
Yeah, because it was scaled, tanked, the house was scaled at 27. That would leave five feet from the tank.
Yeah. So we'd have.
And then 10 feet from side setbacks would be conforming.
Compute that for me for, for us, from leg setback, if we.
Eighty-seven.
Just be 80?
Eighty-seven.
And 10 on sides.
Using that 65, two figure there?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Can we still get a number that we know from the high watermark?
Exactly.
So it's maximum, minimum setback from the lake accomplished by moving it to 87 feet. And that gives them options to turn it if they wish. And still be in compliance with that.
Right, they wouldn't have to turn it to fit in there. Right, yeah, it would be a much easier move. I don't know how, I don't know the mechanics of that, but.
Is there a timed frame in terms of when this would need to be done?
A building permit would be good for a year if you started and two years. A year, if you start within the first year, you get a second year out of it.
So how far are they into it now?
Uh, it would be a brand new permit. It'd be issued July 1 or something like that. So you give it to them July 1, 2017 to start. In 2018 for a completion.
Just for the record, can you, can you refresh my memory as to how they got here? Is there a, actions taken by Philip that kind of contradicts some of the information that you were given?
Yeah, so one of the conditions on the building permit that they were working was you cannot exceed more than 50% of the removal of the value.
Right.
And when their contractor got in there and when they're working with wooden nails, they look at it as the best thing to do would be to rip this gable down, build brand new, put this in, put that in. So it wasn't somebody that was knowledgeable in the shoreline zoning laws in Maine, which a lot of contractors would want the permit on site, read the permits, know exactly what's going on when you're in that, that 250-foot zone, especially the 100 or the first 25. So that would be the main thing, that contractors that are used to working in the shoreline zone or DEP certified people, they would be looking for that documentation, be looking for conditions. Because the hammer and nails is the easy part.
Who determined the percentage factor, you or real estate operator?
If it's close, if it's a simple project, we can look at it and say that. But on the other side, once you've exceeded it, so in this case, really, all that's left is a floor and two walls.
And the reason why I'm asking, I used to improve that down with Wells.
Yeah.
And we cut out the 51% because of town of Wells, which is very strict and bleak. They would go by the insurance company's appraisal to how much the property was worth as insured value. And they ended up with within $4,000. We didn't have to lift the structure up to meet the flight requirements.
Yeah.
But if the code enforcement officer first looked at it, his estimate was that we were.
Yeah, so you're fine line.
Yeah, so we need a professional to determine that.
Yep, yep. State of Maine.
Proved it, all the insurance assesses.
Yeah.
Insurance value can make a difference. Does he still have that option? Or does he exercise that option already?
They were looking at it for a while and I went to the site with the DEP and it was really clear that you were. Yeah.
Did he exercise that? I guess he did.
Ready for a motion? Can I have 87 feet?
I think 87 feet is easily attainable.
Okay, so we accept, we go with Kenny's recommendation, you have a setback 87 feet in that one?
We have conditions.
We have conditions.
Do you want to list those in the motion?
No.
It would be vegetate the site and storm mitigation.
About the idea of power to the neighbor's house?
I don't think you're even into it, moving it back just that little. You would not get into it.
There would be a bodily question.
Are you sure that it fits the setback? Is that a condition?
Side setbacks?
Or is that just an on that?
I, I would put that in the motion.
Well, it's you will just list the conditions out. Right, so that's, just put all the setbacks there at once, 87 from the water, 10 foot from the side. And.
Five foot from the septic.
Five, five feet from the septic.
Either the front door becomes a window?
It can be utilized, keeping the door and it uses, basically, they wouldn't be able to do a step in the front anyway, so. But they could bring grade up.
Or they could move the camp back 90 feet and then have the three feet in front of it still to put a little step there and use their door. That would be their own choice because 87 is the line, so they could have a little something in the front if they, or if, you know, they made enough room to do it, which we were giving them a little bit of room there.
Perfect.
Depending on their movers and nippers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see the, you know, the boilerplate.
Storm mitigation.
Dirt, lumps, trashes on the sides, no matter how the thing's facing. They already revegetated for those three trees they took in the.
No, points haven't been brought back in yet.
So we just maybe stick that in there, that the.
That's a second problem on its own.
Yeah, we don't want to forget about it in the whole game of things.
You guys made a separate program.
Right, they went through AWOL for that, so they should follow up on that. Or they got permit from me, was what you're saying.
Correct, yeah.
They already got a permit.
Which requires a revegetation plan by a certain time.
Right, got that in there, okay.
All right, so all that is part of the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Okay. Comments? additions? All in favor? One, two, three.
I don't know.
Leslie, I'm sorry, Leslie is. So five more. Okay. So, so you guys, probably your best job is to touch base with Ken at some point. Would you agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions, comments? I give you an opportunity, if you want.
We were, I mean. What, I guess what's our next step? Can we, I don't know, my mind was a little bit shattered. We were, we stopped all work interior of the camp while we were figuring all this out. Are we still under that, Ken?
I wouldn't want to be doing my interior finishes and relocating the camp. So you'd be pulling a building permit within the next couple of weeks for relocation of the camp. And that's, like I said, that's good for, as long as you start the first year, you get a second year out of it as far as buying you time. So it would just matter as far as your interior finish, when you wanted to relocate the camp.
So, Ken, the existing building permit that we have, so we can't complete that? So here's, what we'd like to do is, you know, everything's been removed, as you know, you've been moved numerous times. We'd like to close off the walls and connect the stuff and use it. Of course, doing what we're gonna do next, the next step. With the understanding that, you know, if, for example, we put sheetrock in, right, on the walls, that it might crack a little when we move the camp back, right? Is that, is that what you're saying? Like, you wouldn't want that to happen, or?
Correct, I mean, that would be your choice there. So you just come in, and then by July 1, and we'll give revision for the permit.
3:30.
And then that'll be your choice if you want to. I would allow you to keep working in there, but it's gonna be clear that you know you have to relocate it.
Right.
And so.
Okay. Whole business, that is, code enforcement, questions, comments?
I don't have anything for you.
Okay. I throw it out there to everybody that just has submitted her recommendation and we had a discussion about the fact that she, you know, was thinking about it and that has happened, that happened two days ago. And it went upstairs, and so I'm waiting at this point. Maybe you've already heard from Jennifer that.
They've got it, should give it to them at the next selectmen's meeting.
Okay. Act on that, right? I mean, that's as far as we're concerned. We don't have much else to do, perhaps just add meetings, like that's what we had.
Yeah.
Okay. Town meeting board representation, was that, is that the new person who's gonna be down here?
No, that was my request to Brandon for some help this evening with some talking points, if I'm gonna be standing at town meeting defending Article 12 and 13. If I'm gonna be representing the board, I'd like the board to help me craft three talking points that support our thinking on our recommendation. If that's possible.
Is our recommendation printed in the warrant?
Yeah. It's a little, it's a little odd. I just picked up this, this afternoon when I was looking at it. The, the recommendation is to approve the article that's written, but you're, what you're recommending is an article that has been entirely rejected. So you're removing the repeal off, I guess, to use that phrase, on the floor of town meeting just to make sure there's no misunderstanding about what the action being.
So that could be definitely point one.
Yeah.
Make that clear.
Thank you, Tom.
Good point. It didn't say that the planning board recommended, does it?
Wait, yeah. Oh, excuse me, I wanted to finance.
Yeah, town council.
What were, what were our votes? Could you help me reinvent the vote on Article 12 and 13 that the board took?
Oh.
Do it tonight.
It was closed.
It was treated to. That was upstairs, remember?
Yes, yes, I mean, it was.
On, on both of them?
No, I don't think.
The law was unanimous on 13 was treated to.
Right.
And on, it seems to keep floating the circus on Article 12, it was illegal. Because it did not, because of the resource protection district definition. We have, like, the selectmen's version of that. When they used the phrase, only resource protection district, that meant in and out of shoreline zone. And they were, they were going against state guidelines, right?
You know, one of the, one of the articles that we were looking at wasn't outside the state guidelines. Yeah, so actually it was illegal.
That was the planning board.
It was actually illegal?
No. You got a way around it. How's the selectmen's?
The selectmen were outside the boundaries.
Wasn't in conformance with the chapter 1 of the Hudson.
They took, they took our language and we had, we had changed some of it. We had taken out.
Because we were outside the shoreline zone, it didn't matter.
Yeah, that's good.
And that was the one that was the planning board, that was illegal.
Right. Well, somebody restate for me. The, our, our discomfort with the selectmen's version was not only that it was illegal, I need to know the reason why it was illegal, just to refresh my memory.
I lay the state law. State law.
We had taken out that, is it, it undeveloped, it's not, we're not gonna know.
Yeah. Okay, that's why it was more permissive than the state law, because you know.
You good there?
Yeah, well, one, one more just on the environmental sense of it. I don't know if we need to even go there, but, or maybe we don't. Those two points would be enough to.
Well, we could say it holds up the, the previous town meeting vote on the Brummer 10th in which the town voted in this manner.
Expressly. To be.
Right, okay. They'd already voted it, you know, that's kind of brought us around to crafting that second protocol, as opposed to just having the one.
Was it 11, 10, 15?
I think it was November 10th, I need to probably check, but that's what I remember.
You say it's November, don't want to take...
November tenth, yeah.
November tenth, me.
Article thirteen, um, one was in the floats of the surface, was again, expression of the public on November tenth, uh, is strong supporter of repealing Article thirteen as well.
Now, Paul Boyant probably said a little something, but, uh, I don't think.
Who's that?
Paul Boyant, he was the one who helped us kind of, one of the few people at the hearing as well.
I was just thinking of the doctor, right?
Yeah.
And the environmental reason, I thought, was primarily that this, this was a fragile, um, area and was, was an area of recharge to our great ponds, and that we didn't wanna diminish the water quality in those areas by allowing more development. And the, and the, the information that we received from Ken was that there was a small number, less than a dozen, is that fair to say?
I would say, because you're looking at, um, parcels that were already created, resource protection came on top of it, and they have no other place to build. So, I mean, a lot of them would be in the resource protection, but they have other places to build, where it was created after, and, uh, the bigger thing is the two thousand and ten expansion of shoreline zone that created a lot of additional resource protection.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's about what you said, it affected about a dozen lots, it wasn't a...
A dozen or less, you said.
Yeah.
So you would really be no significant, as far as water quality, because...
You can look at it all the way, I guess.
Yeah.
That's about the only thing that is on our plate for the water, right?
Just the two, two articles.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Nine o'clock at the school.
Yep.
Any, uh, any else for anybody? Motion to adjourn? Second? Are we done? We are done.